Okay, thank you for coming this evening. We have a robust agenda tonight. Before we begin the regular board meeting, we have a public hearing on our school renovation funds or SRRF funds. So earlier this year, we set aside some funds we applied for to help upgrades, to upgrade some of our facilities. So with Don Brezner here, he's been in a few times to talk about what the funds mean, what they will do. But as part of the process, we are having a public hearing this evening to talk through some of that as well and answer any questions that come. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Audrey. So good evening, all. As Audrey had mentioned, we're going to go through the history of the revolving renovation fund, how we got here. We're going to talk about the award schools. Very pleased to report that out of 109 applications, four schools from MSAD 60 made it. And actually, we scored the second highest in the state in terms of funds. A lot of that has to do with what I do, which is grant writing and making sure that I can, for the benefit of the taxpayer, for the benefit of the school board and the administration, reduce the cost of upgrading facilities. Steve Ferguson, who's here with me. And I'll just go back a couple here. So I run the division called the BIMS. Bill over here is one of the people that actually implements our projects. He's here as well, but Kevin Moore is, he needs no introduction. And we're here really as a benefit to him. It's amazing, folks, when I look around the state and I look at the condition of school facilities in the state of Maine and I see the age. And a lot of times we're left with two possibilities. One is to spend major, major dollars to renovate school facilities, which this district has considered in the past. Very expensive, 50, 70, 100 million dollars is not unusual. And that's all on the taxpayer's nickel. And in that case, more than necklace. The other alternative, which is something that we're promoting, is to ask the state to participate in funding some of these improvements that are badly needed. And when Steve Ferguson is here, and Steve is actually the president of ARRIS, which is an engineering firm that evaluates the school facilities. So what you're going to see quite a bit when Steve talks about the engineering aspect, it's hard. It's hard to make the infrastructure of schools seem interesting. Because, you know, when we walk into a building, we just expect the heat to be on. We expect the lights to be on. We expect to be comfortable. But there's a lot behind that. And what's behind that is, in this case, and these four schools that were awarded the grant, is equipment that is 35, 40, 45 years old. And not only is it on its life, it can fail at any time. And failure means closure of something, and you don't want to do that. So our approach is, we want to go out and get as much funding for you as possible. And we applied for all the schools. And I know that that's probably a question that the board might have on the others. And the fact of matter is, the other schools scored a point less than this group. And the reason for that, as I explained to the admin team, is it would be incredibly unfair for the Maine Department of Education to have given all the money. And the pool of money this year was 25 million plus a $3 million rollover from a previous year where schools didn't implement the projects for whatever reason. It would have been incredibly unfair for them to award even more than the $6.1 million that they did to this school district. So, having said that, we'll go through the schools, the financials of what the grant means and how it lays out, and then the vote itself. And some of you wonder, like, what is your process? How do you get here? And we actually retain subject matter experts. What is that? People that are very skilled in what they do. Steve happens to be one of them. So he works in school districts throughout the state, hospitals, universities. He understands how systems work. So he and Kevin have very different conversations than you and I would have. All about systems and not working. The good news is that he's here on the backend. And before you came in tonight, we were talking about the first phase of our projects and how places like the bandroom that were previously uncomfortable or the boilers that used to run all the time. We've fixed some of those problems. And Steve is a person that is actually measuring some of the before and the after. So we look at everything. And in looking at equipment, how does it affect educational services? So if there's no heat in the building or if there's low ventilation, then kids can get sleepy. So there is a real connection between age and performance of equipment and actual how you teach and how you learn. Is what you have reliable? Is it redundant? Meaning if one fails, is there backup? And is it efficient? We're all interested in reducing a lot of money that we spend on energy because energy is incredibly expensive. So how can we, or is it possible, when we put in new equipment, does it reduce our energy expenses? The other thing is, and I think that this is the pictorial that sort of tells it all here, is there is a lifespan of all the equipment. This building is almost 25 years old. Almost 25 years old. So all of the information that is out there tells us that most of the equipment, whether it's boilers, piping distribution equipment, ventilation, has a lifespan between 15 and 25 years. And then you're at the end and you should be replacing that equipment. It's fully depreciated. So to understand where you are with reliability of heating in terms of distributing it, we've replaced the boilers here, is it code compliant, all these other issues. You're way out here. You're way past the useful life of all this equipment. Is that unusual for school districts in the state of Maine? The answer truly is no. But again, we're about reporting to you what we see here and trying to do something about it. And to the benefit of the taxpayer, to the benefit of the taxpayer, use state money so you don't have to have everything come out of your pocket to replace these aged systems. So we actually started this process, Kevin was asking about this a little bit earlier. It seems like these, a couple of my kids have gone through college. We've been here so long, but that's not the case. We actually started in January of 2023, gathering all this information, filling out the applications, making sure that the application matches what the need is. So for 2023, the applications were due at the end of October, and they specifically said, "We are only going to give money for priority one projects." Priority one projects are indoor air quality projects or projects that have ADA. But we're not going to replace boilers and give you money for that. We're not going to replace roofs and give you money for that. It's only indoor air quality, which, by the way, the four schools have a lot of HVAC indoor air quality mechanical equipment and building controls equipment. So you are the perfect candidate. And then, great news, in February 2024, that we have the award. And then we've gone through the legal review and we're hoping that on June 11th, your vote date, that there'll be an acceptance of the, not only the $3.5 million grant award, folks. There's also, this is the one thing that there is in the $6.1 million. There's the remaining portion of that is actually financed by the Maine bond bank for 10 years at 0% interest. So for those of us that have financed used cars and other things, houses or whatever, 0% is incredible. And the combination of the two is a gift. It truly is a gift. So I want you to know where you finished up here. Again, I told you that there were 109 applications. And I heard from a number of Audra and Sue and Denise's counterparts that filled out those applications, looking for this money to fix up their schools. And they didn't make the grade. And they were quite upset. And they called into the Maine Department of Education and said, "Why didn't we get the money and why did MSAD 60 get the money?" And, well, I have to give our grant writing team a pat on the back because when we collect all the grants from the last three years, two years ago, we got 25% of the fund, total funds. Last year, we got 68% of the total funds, including MSAD 60. Those other school districts, it was clear for our grant writing group why they didn't get the award and how they submitted. So a little pat on the back to this whole admin team. We followed the rules. We did the right thing. And lo and behold, 6.1 million. Almost 22% of the available funds have been awarded to this district, almost 22%. Now, this is the part where Kevin says, "Don, you're not going to talk about the technical stuff tonight, right?" And I said, "No, Kevin. That is why Mr. Ferguson is here." To my colleague in front, Mr. Steve Ferguson.
Wow, this is work.
Yeah, we're back.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having us in. As Don said, I'm going to just talk about the four schools that we've got included in the work. And I think, I try and take the best picture I can. I know they're not glamorous or anything, but I'll try and tell a story with it. I think as Don says, the issue is simple. Most equipment is 20 to 25 years, according to my professional society, Ashred. And it varies depending on creed. But the equipment that we have included in here is all like upper 30s, low 40s, 38 years old, 44 years old. And it is testament a bit to the progress we're making here. It's gotten that many years out of it. It's awesome. It's actually really good. But the issue is that that equipment's going to fail. There's already things about it that are showing tiredness. And it's not working as well as it should for the students. And I think that's the message that come out of this with. So I'll try and show it and gladly answer any questions as we go along. But we'll talk first about Hanson. Hanson actually has three different kind of phases to it. Or three different constructions. The first construction was built in 1979. And it still has three of the most lovely, old and tired rooftop units that you've ever seen. And that's a picture of the inner workings of one of them. And you can kind of see it over the table, but that's what that looks like. There's three of those green things sitting up on the roof, and they are tired. They have done all that they're going to do. You can kind of see the doors kind of bent. The inside is lined with fiberglass. And so you actually could get fiberglass particles in the airstream headed into the service areas. So these guys are ready to be changed out. And we've included that in the work. One of the other things that is part of the project is exhaust fans and some of the terminal equipment that is also beyond its life. Again, it's 44 years old. And this is all part of the ventilation process in the school. And it's time for it to see some new life. It's just old and tired. One of the other things to talk about, though, is not just equipment age, but controls. The equipment is sitting there and it's doing its thing, but it's the controls that really make it work. And the control components at Hanson are just a little bit newer than that 44-year-old rooftop unit. The problem is, is that the equipment is, the control components aren't made anymore. You can't buy those components anymore. And they're not talking properly to each other right now. There are new ventilation strategies. There's new energy-saving strategies. They can be implemented if you have the right controls. You don't have the right controls. And so that's also part of the project is to replace the controls at Hanson to give it a new life so that you can incorporate those energy saves. Oops. Somebody go back. So, oh, we're at Milton. Yeah, how quick did we move across? So this is Milton, and Milton is 38 years old. Been around a while as well. And the air handling units at Milton, you can see some nice photos I've got there. They are also tired. And one of the things that's concerning about Milton is the air handling systems are aligned with this acoustical lining. It's fiberglass. And the coating that they put on that 38 years ago wears away. And we see this all the time. It's not special to MSAD 60. It happens everywhere. But after 24 years, 25 years, and you're 38, that coating wears off. So again, you have that fiberglass particles that are open to the airstream and does get carried down into the occupied spaces. You can see the air handler in the bottom picture. That's a pretty good picture of it really torn up. So again, these units are 38 years old and they're really beyond repair. There's no way to really repair these units. And so we have those in the project as replacement. Again, typical life is 20 to 25 years. We put 25 there, but it's really 20 to 25 something. Okay, again, we've got the terminal equipment in there. Exhaust fans that are all part of that ventilation strategy. Oh, yeah, that's right. One of the other things about Milton is that there's no way for all the, you know a dishwasher? You know, they pull it down and then they lift it up and all this steam kind of goes everywhere. I don't know if you've ever seen like a commercial kitchen dishwasher. You got one in Milton, and there's no way for that vapor to leave. It just sort of like collects in the room. There's a little exhaust grill up above, and it really doesn't work effectively. So that vapor goes into the building and you can kind of imagine what that vapor does. The moisture gets up in the ceiling, into these ceiling tiles. It collects, it moistens the ceiling tiles, and in warm weather, you can imagine the mold that might start with that. So this is not acceptable. So what we've included in this is just the installation of a hood and a new exhaust fan to take the vapor and the heat out of the building. Okay. Also with Milton, we've got the controls in. So, yeah, so in Milton, they have pneumatic controls. And when I went in the Air Force in 1989, pneumatic controls were all the rage. But the way they work is you take an air compressor, kind of like the same one that you have in your garage, and we send 20 pounds per square inch air throughout the entire building, through these little tubes and these little pipes. And the way that these things work is really springs and levers. We apply the 20 pounds per square inch on this side of the lever, and we push down on it. And depending on where you set the spring and the fulcrum, dictates what that control thing does to change the signal over here to something less than 20 PSI. They were great in the 70s and 80s. They were cutting edge in the 70s and 80s. But they're not cutting edge now. And the problem with that is that you can't apply these energy strategies and these ventilation strategies anymore. You just can't do it with pneumatics. And so you have a lot of pneumatics in Milton. You also have more controllers that actually aren't produced anymore. So you've got this control system that isn't capable of doing modern ventilation and modern energy efficiency.
The other thing I would say, Steve, is, just as an adder to that, is that, you know, you hear everywhere you drive, you see people saying, "Help one, help one." And part of what we do is go to the trade schools and try to get folks that are coming out of school, get them interested in our trade, which is a little bit more difficult because it's not quite as sexy as Google or Apple or SpaceX or something else. But they don't teach pneumatics anymore. And that's the challenge, is that, as you can see how, Steve knows he's a little nerdy about this and how excited he gets on pneumatics and air, which was in 1989, it was the rage. But this is 2024, and we don't get anybody coming out of the trade schools that even understand the principles of pneumatics. So it's impossible for us to find technicians to work on the equipment. And it's impossible for us to find replacement parts, even on Craigslist or eBay. And sometimes it actually, folks, it does get that desperate. So you have to understand, that is sort of the generation of why it is really critical to change out these components because when they go to absolute failure, which they can, then that can close its hole. And Kevin can call and be as nice and diplomatic as he wants. But there is not a lot of things that we can do in that case. All right, Steve.
So with the high school, what you're going to see at this high school is, we measured ventilation. We measured ventilation by placing carbon dioxide monitoring stations down below. And you can see that the ventilation in the high school is not great. The areas that we have red are areas that we actually measured. This graphic shows four rooms that we measured, and out of the four rooms, we made it a forehead-high ventilation. And sorry, all forehead-high carbon dioxide, which means all forehead bad or done. High school is actually 24 years old, 25 years old. And the systems, the mechanical systems in it are actually really cool. But if they're not working properly, if their controls aren't controlling dampers in the fans and, you should ask Kevin sometimes what tells us, how many dampers are in the school? Unbelievable, even the hundreds. And many of them are functioning properly. And the reason they're functioning properly is because the controls in the building can't talk to each other. There are a couple of different vintages of controls. Those controllers are no longer produced. They use a communication protocol that no longer is produced. And so the controls are of an age and of a vintage that they just can't talk to each other. And so these great systems that you have can't function properly. And that's what's happening in the high school, in a nutshell. So what we've gotten here is really controls. And as we say here, it's the brain of the building, it's what makes these great air handling systems work well. They have some great capacity. They have some great capabilities. They're just not working properly together. See. I think we kind of, that's one of the dampers that, like I said, hundreds of these things are throughout the building. Many of them are actually closed, not many, I shouldn't say that. But some of them are closed, preventing air from moving to certain areas of the building. All right, I won't keep that up. Anyway, part of the project is to install new controls and then go through the building and rebalance and recommission. Okay, North Berwick. We've got two areas of the building that don't currently have ventilation systems. One is a classroom space. And the other is the main office and nurses area, where there really is not proper ventilation in there. So part of the project is to include ventilation in there. Again, we have exhaust fans and some other terminal equipment as part of it. And then this is the control thing again, the pneumatic controls with the springs and levers. This is an example of one of the pneumatic controllers. And you actually can kind of see the lever. See the vertical thing right there? That's actually the lever. And the way you adjust it is kind of fascinating. Anyway, so in the project, we have new controls, new controls to replace the pneumatic, to bring it up to date.
So, I'm sorry, go back to that. So for those of us, again, to make sort of a pictorial of the technology era, for those of you that do recognize vacuum tubes on the right, that's exactly what you're dealing with when you deal with pneumatic controls. So that's the comparative.
And I think that does it for my part. I'm going to pass the bat gun.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions for Steve on the projects and what we're doing? And upgrading everything and replacing things that are aged and old and need a replacement? Because now it comes the fun part, I think, for me, and sort of the where we were trying to head. And the part that I really want to make sure that folks in this room, I think the board understands it, is why we're happy as grant writers and implementers is that when you have projects that total $6.4 million and you say, "Oh, my goodness, that's a lot of money." And it is. But being in Saco and looking at the replacement school there of $110 million and compare that to fixing four schools for $6.4 million. But here's the thing, that I hope everybody in this room walks away with. Everyone in this room walks away with. And that is, from that $6.4 million, the state is giving $3.5 million against that project that this taxpaying community does not have to pay back. That is part of this school revolving renovation fund program. That was our goal at the outset, to get as much money from the state to do this extensive work on all this infrastructure that Kevin has been maintaining for all these years. This way past its useful life that you don't have to pay back. The second piece of that that we've talked about is, is part of that award is a 10-year, 0% financing for $2.6 million. So it's two parts of the award of the SRRF. An outright grant, meaning you don't have to pay back the $3.5 million, and then 0% on $2.6 million. And then, so there is some contribution, which in working with Denise and the administrative team, a small piece of the total project that the feeling is, is that we'd be able to finance that at bond rates, which again is a lower percentage that you would pay on a commercial tactic. So overall, from a grant writer's perspective and from a team that has represented and evaluated these facilities, I couldn't be happier. I think that the admin team is very happy. I think Kevin hopes that the community and the taxpayer understands that protecting your investment, your schools, the health and safety of these schools, we've done it in the most fiscally responsible way. So there's a lot of information that comes out of presentations like this. And then if I could just ask everybody in here to, you know, some people glean different pieces at the end of it. What did you understand? What was your takeaway? What are key words that you heard? And so I put five, what I think resonate with me. And that is that the infrastructure projects that we're talking about and try to define, they're related to safety and wellbeing of students and staff. Ventilation, air that's properly heated and treated. And most important thing, we're utilizing state funds to help pay for the projects. And third piece, there is no frill in here. We're utilizing these funds to only pay for what is necessary. It's almost a life-for-a-life replacement. Yes. Yes, is it modern? And are we taking out pneumatic and putting in modern systems that will reduce maintenance costs? Will reduce energy costs? Because those systems that Steve talked about will now be working more congruently. That is true. So, but there isn't anything that we're putting in here above and beyond that would be considered to be gold-plated or, or something that is, oh, we're doing this for this teacher or for this administrator. We're replacing life for life. Why? To give you another 25 years, but we're Maine Yankees, so we're going to get 35 to 40 years. But to give you that other 25 years. And again, emphasizing this is the best program for the taxpayer. Three and a half million dollar grant that you do not have to repay and 2.6 million that's at 0% financing. And in the end, no parent, no administrator, no student wants to see school is closed, pipe has exploded, all the things that we've talked about because of age and because of condition. The best condition that it possibly can be that you have a systematic failure that requires a school to be shut down and now you're in emergency mode. And the question is, when can we reopen it? And I don't have that answer for you. Because today, we still have the same situation. We still have product shortages, long lead times. We still struggle for a skilled workforce. So I don't have the answer. What I do have the answer for is there's less likely of a chance for that to happen if you, everyone here and all the citizenry votes an approval on question one. Vote yes. And that's the way it looks. And it's a, you know, it's got many paragraphs and complexities to it. But that's, that's the wires, right? They have to cover the complexities. So the admin team did the right thing, they reviewed this. This is the way the ballot has to be worded because it is a bond. It is a debt instrument, but you're also getting back that three and a half million dollars and the two point somewhat million at 0%. So we're excited. We've been joyful to be part of this process. We were especially heartened to get that award. It was a, a big win for the, the team, you know, the grant team. Steve, Kevin, the board, all the administrators have been extremely cooperative. And I, I do hope that come voting day, that the citizens will, will be an affirmative for this because it's very necessary and a very good use of your funds. So that's it. We'll take any questions, Kevin, Steve, myself.
Sir, the Noble Middle School, has that already had its system, systems updated? Is that why they are not included in your grant survey?
No, so each one of the remaining schools had a submission. And what we're hoping is for an affirmative for this package. And then our grant writing team will propose to the administrative team and the board to go back, probably polish off and update our submission from last year and do the same ask. And that's permissible under the rules. And, and, and again, it was heartening for us to see all of the schools score very highly in terms of money that could have been awarded, but it would not have been good public relations for the state to award all the money for all your schools. Because like all schools in Maine, we tend to run them longer, leaner. And they don't get as much love and capital as they, they should, but that would be the plan. The clock would start ticking immediately after June 11th and we would come back to the board and they'd say, oh, I like Steve, but Dawn, I'm so tired of listening to you. But that's what we would actually do is we would put forth the other schools for your consideration and for the state's consideration.
You talked about how the new equipment would last up to 20, 25 years. And I feel like today's equipment never lasts as long as what it used to last. So is that, is that a realistic timeline to really expect the same life out of what we'd be putting in this school? And I'm not, I'm not saying that it doesn't need to be replaced. I'm just curious if that's realistic.
Yeah, I mean, the time will tell. And, and we're, we look at the installation, we were just looking at some of the air conditioning equipment that we put into Haci and some of it didn't quite come out of manufacturing the way that we wanted, so we had to do a field repair. But having said that, it's not as mechanically intensive as this equipment. So therefore it doesn't have as many parts to break. And that would be our hope that the ashtray life, and again, it depends upon the component, 15 to 25 years is the span depending upon the equipment. But yes, we are, and, and again, as long as it's maintained. So Kevin keeps telling me that he's here for another six. Sue says that he's here for another eight. Andre says he's here for another 10. But it really does count on doing proper maintenance and then that equipment life could be extended and reach those years.
How are you selecting the equipment? You know, so like there must be a variety of brands or options out there. How are you making those decisions?
So we work a lot with, with Steve as a, Steve is a licensed professional engineer in the state of Maine. We work with another independent licensed professional engineer in the state of Maine. And then we have yet another, there's too many engineering brains in the room. And what we do is we compare the success of the manufacturer of the equipment in the school facilities. And we select best equipment that will have the least amount of problems for Kevin. What have we put in or what are we servicing that we're currently seeing issues with other people? You see a lot of articles and papers about failed ground source heat pump systems that were supposed to save all kinds of money and, and energy. But they were improperly designed, the manufacturer is no longer in business. So part of having such a diverse group of engineers, talking to project managers and service people is figuring out the best kinds of equipment that will last the longest and serviceable. That's our process. Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, well, thanks everyone for your time. I think that this is a great project and I, I hope it is well received by the community.
Thank you.
Ten minutes, Phil, already to go?
Up these little dioramas.
Oh, I have it all.
Is it first on the thing? All right, well, we'll start the meeting at least and then go.
Oh boy. Spreading out here.
Don't get too, we're gonna have to. Like have a presentation again.
Gonna move guys.
Start the thing and then we'll have to move again.
Are we gonna flip the box?
Not right now.
Because the salmon thing has to come on.
Oh my gosh, okay.
Victoria, just stay down there.
But all those people come.
Everything running and yeah.
That out, so I think there's a lot of.
This is the agenda.
Yeah, I already have.
Internet, so I think I know what I have.
I just felt, I was like, I should have told her to stay down below. For you, but yeah, I mean, you can stay right over.
Every time I come in this room, I'm not online, I have to, it's a guest every time.
I have no internet too today.
Well, I usually do.
Go up to where it says, you go up to the thing that shows your signal.
She don't have a stool.
Yes. Oh, did you do? Oh, you weren't here, she was here last time. I thought I was the last one.
My guess is that they, they, they're used for us to be staff.
That would make sense.
Thank you again, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And begin our meeting, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get our public input statement, we do have to make an amendment to the agenda because something was listed twice. So we're going to remove number 11 because we are handling it in number nine. So motion to amend our agenda.
So move.
All in favor?
Taking number 11.
Right, yeah. And now our public input statement will be read by our vice chair.
The first public input session is a 21-minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a public, second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chair. Each speaker will give his, her name, address and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel, cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forward with respect. This is time for comments and/or questions for the board, but please be aware that questions may not be able to be answered at this meeting.
Thank you. Is there any public input at this time? Then we'll move to number three, the minutes of May 2nd and May 9th. Let's look at May 2nd first.
Lauren.
And they're retired. Donna retirement.
Okay.
There just needs to be space for Travers and so.
Third line down. I think that's what I saw.
Motion to approve. All in favor? And moving on to May 9th. Paragraph with, there were three in the audience.
Because there was an executive. I said it was an executive session, so do we have an audience?
So.
Okay. That makes sense then.
Motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor? Okay, moving on to celebrations.
Okay. We have two highlights this evening. The first is going to be Noble Middle School, the STEM club and the sea perch competition. We have audience members here who are going to come up. So Principal Archibald, do you want to start us off or?
Bring it up to Mr. Pete too.
Yeah, or Mr. Pete.
Everybody, come on down and line up against this wall right here and let's stretch that all the way down. Yeah, bring those up. So is it okay if we use the stage up there for a little demo area?
Yeah, would you like us to? What do you guys think? Do we, I think we're good or?
Thank you, everybody. It's exciting to be here tonight to recognize the achievements of this group of students right here. And I can't predict the future, but we were talking about controls and vacuum tubes and things like that.
I get it.
And these might be some of the kids that solved those problems in about 10 to 15 years. So if you want to go ahead and open up your ROVs on the stage.
Would you like the board to sit below or are you able to see from up?
I think you can see from there. So we're gonna stay lined up over here though, that way we can introduce ourselves. Yeah, and if one of you, I have a battery. So if one of you wants to actually connect it, hell, you want to do that? And I'll have you come back over here, you guys. So I'll start talking while they're setting up. So the STEM club is a junior old from a program at middle school. It was started last year and the goal is to engage about 20 students, more and more in engineering science. Oh, I bring Chris Eric up here as well. So Chris is actually our shipyard liaison. And not only an excellent engineer, but he also has a graduate from Noble High School and now he's had an eighth grader at Noble, Noble High School. Well, thank you, Chris. Chris has been helping us to guide us with the shipyard on sponsoring a lot of the things that we do. And this is the most recent, but before we got started with this, this group of individuals, we'll have them introduce themselves here in a second. They went ahead and started with a solar powered little model car. Each one of them built a solar powered model car. And then from there, they went on to backyard rockets, which woke up the, woke up the students when we were at a recess one day. And then last, a couple of months ago in January, we started working on the Steve Bridge project. So the sea project is actually a national competition. And we participated in it at University of New Hampshire. At University of New Hampshire, there were 18 schools represented comprising 50 total teams. And the guys with the trophy right here actually won their event. Who is one of our two sixth graders and Leila is holding the trophy because Noble Middle School, 18 schools, came in second place.
Nice, that's awesome.
Very exciting. So now what I'd like to do, if you guys can, let's introduce ourselves. So let's start with you, Noah. Noah, what? What actually school did you go to since we were just looking at those ones? Go ahead there.
My name is Hunter Cook. I'm from Noble Middle School and I went to the, the backboard elementary school. Me and my team were the first place players and the challenge horse. Unfortunately, two of our teammates aren't here, um, who did the baseball game.
Hang on a second, if I can brag about you guys a little bit more. If they had been competing against the high schoolers at that, at that program, it would have come in second place.
That's awesome.
Go ahead there, Zach.
My name is Gabrielle Ryan. I am in Noble Middle School and I am from Doris Berwick Elementary School. And I was in my first team.
Thank you for.
President, I'm from Noble Middle School, from the Northbrook Elementary School and my team did one anyway.
You did, you became second place this year. So you can throw your points in.
I'm Josh Runner and I'm from Noble, Noble Middle School and. the Haze Norton School.
Go ahead, Leila.
I'm Leila White. I'm in the middle school, and I'm from Norton School.
I am Ella Dipley. I am in the middle school, and I am from an elementary school, and our team is the Three Puddles.
I'm Natalie Rondo. I'm somewhere in the middle school. I'm from Norton. I'm also part of the Three Puddles. It's tough.
I'm Rachel O'Farrell. In seventh grade at Noble Middle School, I'm from Logan Elementary. And I'm part of the Three Puddles.
I'm Evan Jones from Austin Noble Middle School. You already know this one, but I'm from Hinn Valley Elementary School in Colorado.
Oh.
And I'm part of the random guys.
Penny Casher on our seventh grade baseball team.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. And so I'm going to put somebody else on. It's going to be Ella. Are you ready, Ella?
Hold on.
All right. Ella's going to tell you, and I'm going to have Ella, I'm going to have you step right up to that podium. Ella's got a little something to share with you on kind of like what we learn, what they learn, and some of the other things to look forward to in their futures. And while you're doing that, I'm going to have somebody come up and actually plug their ROV into the battery, and you can actually start coming up with it through yours.
Is it dependent on you to do this?
Yes. Really, I would really want to.
I don't like how much.
You don't have to. Go ahead, Ella, say your words.
Good evening. My name is Ella Dipley. I am in sixth grade at Noble Middle School and a member of Mr. Pete's Sea Purge Robotics Program. While building our Sea Purge underwater robot, we learned very valuable lessons such as teamwork. Working in a group is really challenging. The STEM Sea Purge program taught us how to work together in a group in a productive and successful way, problem-solving, and critical thinking. When building our Sea Purge robots, we had to figure out what worked, what didn't work, and how to fix any problems on our own. We also need to figure out how to successfully complete the obstacle courses and all of its challenges. How propellers work. We learned about torque, thrust, momentum, and other various ways propellers work to make the Sea Purge robot propel forward vertically and backwards underwater. Responsibility. We've had, we had to be responsible when using various methods to build our Sea Purge underwater robot, like soldering tiny wires into a small circuit board that is used to control the rover's propellers when it was underwater. The solder was very hot and could splatter into our eyes if we were not careful. Eye protection was required for safety, and we needed to be very focused on the task at hand. Communication. Whether it was communicating to each other about how to build our underwater robots or during the actual competition while maneuvering them around the obstacle course, we needed to work on our communication skills to do it. Listening is also a very important part of communication, and we needed to listen to our teacher, Mr. Pete, to learn how to build our Sea Purge and what the rules were for the competition. I really enjoyed being on Mr. Pete's Sea Purge theme and learned a lot. Only 5% of the world's oceans have been explored. That means 95% of our oceans are still waiting to be explored to discover new things we haven't even dreamed of. Maybe one day even we might build an underwater robot that will allow us to learn more about our planet. Thank you.
So the ROV was actually in the Olympic-sized pool there at University of New Hampshire. And if you want to go ahead and have the propellers, each of the, each of the controls, move the propellers in one specific direction, and that allowed it to turn, come up, come down. Actually, go ahead. And they built everything. It wasn't like it was put together and they just like zip-tied it together. They built that entire thing. All the teams, it'd be a five-team team. So, you know, it's, I'm really proud of these guys. And when you're around them for, you know, as much time as I'm around these 20 kids, I think our future is in good hands.
Let's play under the steps for the sneeze.
What's the best part of the project? What did you like the best?
Anybody want to try another one?
I loved building the rubber. That was a fun, fun part for me.
Watching everything was a lot of fun.
Yeah?
Like watching what we like to talk about, watching what we made together as like a, as like a group thing.
Would any of one of you share one of your biggest challenges in this project and how you worked through that? Can you take that?
Um, yeah, I think one of the things that was drilling.
Why did you have to do it again?
Um, because somebody messed up. Also, the fact that the water, uh, water get into the pipes and so that our ROV could submerge and it would just float underwater. Because if the pipes didn't have bolts on them, it wouldn't be able to wander the propeller, the vertical propeller wouldn't be able to push it down and up.
I would say also that one of our challenges was soldering the circuit boards. We had to make sure everything was almost perfect because that is how we controlled our underwater robots.
Any of you want to share what your goals are? And has this had an impact on how you see your future?
That's a big question.
Noah, Noah, you got anything to add?
Well, I think that this experience tells a lot about teamwork.
Awesome.
Communication was another big thing. Because making sure that people had their parts done to make sure you could work on to the next part and actually start building it. Because if you built one part and didn't build another, you'd have to go back, and sometimes you couldn't go back.
They're wise.
Anybody else? Yours?
No, not really.
Was something that surprised you as you were going through the whole experience?
There was the wax inside the motor.
So to, to, the wax that we used was a toilet ring, a toilet, well, wax ring. And as soon as they saw it, it was for a toilet.
Brand new, right?
Well, thank you for.
Thank you, guys.
What advice would you, as participants, give someone else who is interested in joining this club?
Um, to listen to their teammates and cooperate with their teammates. And the key goal to be, to be able to work with a team of four people is to be able to accept that sometimes we might be wrong.
Wow, good. That's a big one. We all kind of need that.
That's advice for the board.
Yeah.
Good for everybody.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Very impressive.
Yeah. Very nice. This one is going to be a video, so we probably, either one of them, yeah, or move to the right. Next one, so.
Yeah, we're going to come on down.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
Thank you.
That's the key is that, make sure you can see.
After a day of hearing. Didn't do anything like that in school.
No, that was cool.
Yeah, that's very cool. Those students have got life lessons out of that. With them forever.
All right. So this next video is from Milton School. We do have some of our representatives from Milton School here. This video is about the salmon program that they've been working through and what they received. We weren't sure how late this evening was going to be. So some of our children did a pre-recording of this wonderful project that they've been working on. So here it is.
Hi, I'm Michelle. I am a fifth grader at Eric Almolden School, and we are super excited to introduce the Fish Friends Program. The Fish Friends Program is an initiative to get endangered Atlantic salmon into schools to help teach students about science and conservation and the importance of this keystone species. And we're introducing them into the rivers of Maine. This program gave us 200 wild-made Atlantic eggs. So they started out as eggs, and we have been raising them since March. Those kids have gotten to see them and make observations of them as eggs when they got here. And now, as you can see, we have fish. They're in the fry stage, and they're coming to pick them up today. The students at Eric Almolden School had the opportunity to come, look at the tank, and make observations. And they charted their observations in our data tracking sheet and did water testing to make sure that the fish had clean water and did water changes. They made observations about the movement of the fish, the habitat that they're in, the habitat that they will be in. And they did some art connections with the fish as well, along with charting their life cycle and doing research about their ecosystem. Students even got the opportunity to travel to UNE to go to their marine marine biology lab and see large, full-grown Atlantic salmon that were in captivity and got an opportunity to go to the salmon hatchery in Saco and learn about what it takes to make this program happen.
Thanks.
This was a really cool opportunity for the Eric Almolden School, and it was made possible by grants. So this did not cost the Eric Almolden School any money out of pocket. And we are super lucky that these grants should be available to us next year. So we will be able to do this program again and give the fourth graders the opportunity to immerse themselves in the life of salmon and learn all about what it takes to help an endangered species come back and see the importance of having them in our communities. Wild-made Atlantic salmon are really unique. They have really long lifespurves. They can live eight to 13 years. And it takes about three years for salmon that are fried to go out into the Atlantic Ocean and then come back and lay eggs again. So this is a really important project, but it's going to take a lot of time and energy. And we're super excited to be able to help and teach the kids about the importance of this species and reintroducing them into the man's rivers.
I'm going, I'm with some, I'm a Latin, I'm from, and I'm a Eva, and I'm doing that for, uh, wait, you. Do you mind just saying, not pulling in for it?
And we're doing a salmon presentation. Introduction. Maine Atlantic salmon are endangered, so we need to help protect that. So get ready to dive into more facts about Maine Atlantic salmon. In this slide, you will learn about Maine Atlantic salmon lifecycle, their habitat, the role they play in the ecosystem, human connections, and threats to end conservation.
Lifecycle of the salmon. Would you like to learn about the sequence? There's an example on how the lifecycle works. First of all, they lay eggs, and then the eggs become eye eggs. After that, they hatch and become eggs. Eggs have an egg still attached for food and nutrients. Once the water hits a certain temperature, they turn into fry, then hard, then slow, then down, and last scurrying down. But in fact, if the water temperature is too cold or warm, it can completely affect the life. Salmon ecosystem. Atlantic salmon play a huge role in the river ecosystem. The salmon eggs at the bottom of the river release vital nutrients and minerals for other animals in that river. The albumen stages are a huge role for predators like tuna, bass, and bears. When they get to the adult stage, they are prey for predators like swordfish and sharks. Just because the salmon are in the food chain means that they, that makes a difference to the ecosystem. Salmon habitats. The Maine Atlantic salmon lives in streams and rivers in central and eastern Maine. They lay their eggs in gravelly areas. Atlantic salmon need access to a wide variety of habitats during their lives as they move from rivers to the oceans and back again. Humans and connections. People have interacted with the salmon in ways that make them endangered. Some waves are out of fishing because people have caught too many Atlantic salmon. But the salmon population can't stay healthy because they aren't, there aren't enough adult salmon to produce more eggs. Atlantic salmon are threatened because they keep the river's ecosystems healthy by being part of the food chain. Oh, sure.
Threat to conservation. There's some reasons why salmon are endangered. Let's go over. Leader of threat to corporate stand in doubt. It blocks their way to open to. The block's their way to spawn. There is a poor water quality in some places like trash in the rivers or oceans. There's some ways people are protecting, so some people are trying to cut the ocean for our habitats and increasing the population. Students can help too. They can ask their school, they can raise salmon at my school, if they can give it back when they are injured, they're far from it. Conclusion. That part of the research is protecting Maine Atlantic salmon. If we don't, they could go extinct. So I hope you learn something and try to help the environment sustain.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you for your help in my class. Miss Passless, Miss Lewis, or Miss Jerry Derns, and Miss Most, how can I scare you?
Hey, any questions? Because we do have Milton here. So if there are any questions. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
So you raise these salmon from little eggs. How do you feel when you have to say goodbye?
That's a really great question. So we got the salmon that has eye eggs, and we got the really cool opportunity of going to the salmon hatchery in Saco and seeing the process that got us the eggs. But it was really awesome to see the kids not only watch them grow up and like name them and chart them and track their data and watch them really develop, but also to see where they're going to go. And what this program does is really try to get them back into our natural habitat and how important that is. So for our students, it was really amazing to see how concerned they are about the salmon populations and about their native ecosystems and really wanting to put them back into the rivers for future generations to be able to enjoy. And really understanding the idea that this isn't an immediate fix, right? These 190 salmon that they put back, the goal is that they're going to come back in three years and lay even more eggs. And really trusting that process and feel like that commitment. And so I've had students be like, I can't wait until the years. I'm going to go to the river. I'm going to see. And so I've had students be like, I can't wait any three years. I'm going to go to the river and I'm going to see them. And understanding that like this is a long-term investment in their futures. And seeing that this is just one small part of that was really great.
In addition to the natural resource aspect and the environmental aspect, I think you also learned a little bit about parenting.
A few questions. How long did you have the eggs until they, when they left?
So we got them in March and we just got rid of our last salmon today.
Okay. And is this, is this opportunity open to like all, like, I mean, how did you find out this opportunity? Is it, is it, are they looking for more and more elementary schools to, to do this? Is it?
So I was on a waitlist for three years. And part of the waitlist was like getting the funding, getting the grants, because all of this was funded through grants that were environmental grants and like specifically like community partners that felt really invested into this project. So part of that was getting funding, but then also, these are rare. They're an endangered species in the state of Maine, so the eggs are heavily protected, so not everyone can get them. So the salmon hatchery that we went to was talking about how difficult it is for just them to get eggs. And how even at the salmon hatchery, they are having trouble getting eggs and they have to contact people that are outside of the state of Maine because there are so few Atlantic salmon left. So this was really, really special that our school got this opportunity because it was really hard to get the egg even for our salmon hatchery. And they were generous enough and trusting enough to be able to hand those off to a bunch of fifth graders to really protect and cherish them.
And it hasn't grown. Not only good, but to find a cooler because it's really important to keep that tank cool. Where did we end up getting it? Because we thought there was going to be a big, long road trip involved in this because you can't just get a cooler. You know, it's not like raising a fish in your, in your living room.
Yeah, so we have an industrial cooler at our school now that's to keep the salmon tank temperature at, well, we raised the temperature for half a year, but keeping it really cold. It started at like 33 degrees. And trying to keep it as close to the natural river temperature as possible. So we, we had to search long and hard for that cooler. And then the grant that funded buying the cooler and all of the other materials for the aquarium to make sure that the fish were safe and healthy. And then watching the kids really take pride in how the tanks looked and felt and making sure that the salmon had artwork that explains why they were there. And making sure that the salmon felt like they were a sense of our community as well. So they checked on them almost every day and our school even put together a website so that if they didn't get a chance to look at the salmon, they could log on and see the salmon's progression and growth and really track that visually. So they got to watch the salmon go from just eggs to being able to see the eye in the egg. And then go from the egg to the albin where they could see the egg sacs still attached and then watch those egg sacs slowly disappear as the fish are getting the nutrients and see them really grow and develop. And our school was super lucky because, and I didn't know this, but when they came to pick up the salmon, we had a two-headed salmon, which they have never seen in this program before. So we've had a two-headed salmon at Eric Almolden School and the students got to watch and search for it. And it was like, oh, where's the two-headed salmon? And we talked a little bit about like the developmental abnormalities that fish can have and talking about how that might affect their rate of survival and talking about how those adaptations can lead over time to whole species changing and what that leads to and what that means for their environment and how that might have happened. And it was really an amazing experience that our students got to be really hands-on and up close and personal with these creatures that are in our natural ecosystem.
How was your hatch rate compared to what normally would be expected?
The hatchery was a really interesting experience. The hatchery talks about how they had to. Oh, the hatch rate?
Hatch rate.
I'm so sorry. Our hatch rate was really amazing. I was very worried about it because this is my first time raising salmon. And when they talked about it, they were like 24 fry made it, 30 fry made it, because we had 190. And so you think out of 200 eggs, that's amazing.
Well, you also had the concern about when they lost power.
Yeah.
You guys were very worried about your.
They were well insulated.
Yeah, we talked about it a lot. It's like, it's great. There's no power.
That's great.
Well done.
I don't know if you have to stay down here or?
No, you guys can go back.
Our audience is good.
They did. Thank you so much. Again, very impressive stuff.
I'm Sharon Backwith. I serve SAD 60 as a STEAM information specialist. I work primarily with kindergarten through fifth grade. And Don Pete was an awesome intro for why we have this program in the district. Before I get started on why I'm really here, I'm here to explain about a Teach With Tech grant, which allowed us to purchase some awesome equipment that is in our schools. But I wanted to highlight some of the things that have happened over the two years since STEAM has become part of the district. We have created a relationship with the shipyard. And Chris Herrick, who you met earlier, is such an awesome individual and parent. He and I have worked together with other representatives from the shipyard and their outreach program. Our students have access to an incredible library of equipment at no charge that is transported by one of the engineers here to the high school and then I distribute it to our students. They have done wonderful things with circuits and just, it's phenomenal. They also have created an opportunity where our students spend a full week each month in all of the K through three schools with engineers in their STEAM classrooms. These engineers come in and assist with curriculum that we've developed or bring materials and teach kids what they're learning today, the impact it can have on their careers. Many of them are actual district parents who are working with our kids. And that has happened throughout the year. And I swear that the engineers have way more fun than the kids. Love coming. Next week is their last week this year. And I've already gotten emails about how sad they are that it's going to happen. This relationship also led to Chris and Amanda Poehler writing a Department of Defense grant that allowed for the purchase of $11,000 worth of Legos. Our kids in our schools have had access to their Lego League materials. It's phenomenal. In front of you, you see a stage. Our kids have gone through a program and their program is very scripted. They're provided with notebooks. They're provided with engineers who, who give them those leading questions. And a lot of the work behind this is about what it takes to be part of engineering design team, that everyone has a job, that just like these students, you have to rely on each other. You have to back up. You have to take, when your idea is not the best idea, and work on that. So we have had a full Lego League for K through three in all of our elementary schools. Our technology staff has also worked with the shipyard. Over the two years, we've had six family events. We've had everything from a pumpkin chunking challenge where family, it was a family event. Families worked together to create either a catapult or a trebuchet and came to the high school on a Saturday and launched them. We've had other family STEAM nights where we set up activities and stations that highlight some of the things that kids are doing in schools. Most recently, we had an event at the Huzzy School. We had 400 people show up and participate. And the shipyard volunteers brought straw rockets and giant Legos. And it just, it was awesome to see families engaged in things that have nothing to do with our technology or our screens. They used all of the things that these kids are learning. But the primary reason that I'm here is I wrote a grant in, well, probably my first summer onboard. It was through Milty. It was a Teach With Tech grant. And what that grant provided was the purchase of laser printers. Our elementary students have access to being able to work on an engineering design challenge. And instead of just making it out of copy paper or cardboard, they actually get to bring their creations to life. These printers can engrave, print, cut out of paper, cardboard, wood, acrylic. We received a donation from Rome out of Sanford. They provided 600 sheets of acrylic for the students. In front of you, you have some of the products that students made. In one school, third graders who work with Maine wildlife habitats created dioramas. They had to do research using their computers to actually create a working model of a habitat. They then designed their own animals. The animals that are in these dioramas, they researched. They had to learn how to build them to scale. They then took their drawings. They were inserted in. The cameras read them and cut them out. So they got to watch the lasers actually do this. These are some of the examples in front of you. There's a couple of puzzles in front of you that are wooden puzzles. Those were created by kindergarten and first graders. They did designs with their art teachers and then brought those designs to their STEAM class. They were then engraved. They could select on the screen that they wanted to create a puzzle, choose how many pieces in their puzzle. They were engraved, cut out. They now took those puzzles back to their classrooms, shared them with their friends, built them, and then took them home. They're learning that even at their young age, an idea can come to reality and be shared. The other thing in front of you that I love are, there are some lights. At the Nolton School, they work very hard on social emotional learning. We are seeing the effects of COVID in ways that we never dreamed. These were created so that students could highlight their own likes. They could shine their own lights. So what they did was they were, they did research to find out what is a laser? How are they used in our world? How can I create something with a laser? They then went into the design programs. They designed the acrylic that you see in front of you to represent how they feel about themselves. What are their likes? What are their interests? And how could they take their 2D design and turn it into something 3D? They actually used our 3D printers that use filament and printed the bases and then incorporated the two together. So they're using all of their technology. So we wrote that grant. Our original hope was that those two, two printers could be moved within the elementary schools. We learned very soon that they're extremely delicate. The cameras and the lasers moving them and moving them from North Berwick to Lebanon puts them at risk. So plus, it took a while to onboard. None of us had ever used laser printers before. So the technology staff learned first, passed that on to the two that have the machines in their buildings now. They learned the programs. They learned the designs, passed it on to the students. We have also applied this year for three more of those printers. We want one in each of the elementary schools and we want Don Pete to have one. If that, if that grant is successful, we will have put those tools from kindergarten to 12th grade in our district. So we will have people who will fix those machines because they started at SAD 60, learning how to be an engineer, whether they're five or eight or 15. So I'm very excited to have had the opportunity to write those grants and to see students like this who are just a few years older. They started as fifth and sixth graders without STEAM. Can you imagine what our kids who are starting now will be able to accomplish?
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that all third graders have the opportunity, but a lot of the third graders took their projects to kindergarten and taught a whole lesson to the kindergarten classrooms with their projects and like call research and everything.
That's awesome. That's amazing.
Interject from the audience. None of this would be possible without Sharon.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, financial summary.
Hey. I don't know. I think the most important thing in the night so far.
Denise, isn't it fun to see, like, we sit on the side of, of reading the grants and signing off on the grants, but wasn't that fun?
Yeah. My frequent participants. Writing lots of grants. And in fact, a lot of the faculty were signing off and more and more teachers. Not the, you know, the big federal ones we usually talk about, but all of these that are so important and lead to these great moments. That's why we're watching the pennies in the financial. So you received, so during the budget process, we got a little behind with speaking to the monthly financial summaries. Things are going along. You can see that we are revenue-wise right on track, expecting, still expecting about 16% at the end of April. And we have about 17% of the fiscal year left. So again, that's right there. And we still have approximately 6% of our budget remaining for the prior, the last two months of the year.
Are you looking at April or February?
Thank you. Again, I'm willing to answer questions about any of the months. But that, as of April, that's kind of where we are.
That's most up to date.
Yes. Maybe just speak to the fact that we have 6% left, but we've had, we encumber money to cover all of this. So the encumbered, I mean, so the amount remaining, that 6% does not include the salaries and wages that we have encumbered and set aside to pay out during the year. So those funds are still available. These are things that have not yet come to pass or that maybe won't. The one I thought of recently was while we have a plowing contract for snow, we also have snow removal. Didn't need to use any of those funds this year. So there are now pockets that we are starting to see where some of, you know, some things where we saved and some things where we went over. So we're at that time of year where we're starting to, to get a clearer picture of where we're, where we're headed. But.
So Denise, if it's like, if this were the.
So Denise, if, if, like, if this were the end, I'm just saying if this is the end, that essentially that six percent would be in designated, or under designated reserve?
Yes, so it goes into the fund balance. Anything we have that we underspent will get uh rolled into that. Um, and then it goes to that calculation. You have a copy in your budget binder, but basically we take the audited fund balance at the end of a year. And then we, you know, subtract out anything we applied to a future budget and that's where we get our fund balance. And it just kind of duplicates that process every year.
Is uh where's, where's six percent? Maybe this is a question more for June. Where's six percent historically? I mean, is that, is that significantly different or somewhere in the same?
It will be higher. We will definitely go down from there because there are bills that are not accrued. Electricity bills that are still outstanding. We have a lot of things that we clean up at the end of the year. We make sure all of our staff have submitted for their reimbursements if they had travel. If um there are unexpected expenses needed at the end of the year, uh graduation expenses, things like that. So this number will definitely go down. Um, it's hard, it's hard to say post-COVID. Pre-COVID, I probably could have given you a good ballpark of where we might end up. Um, and it's usually, we used to say somewhere in the three percent range. Um, but uh post-COVID, it's been a little more uh difficult to um predict so closely.
Okay.
I guess that's how I would say it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Okay, moving on to number seven, title twenty A, section one four eight five four, authorization to transfer funds.
Okay, and we have this every year. This is something that we um get permission from the board, an approval from the board so that we are able to um transfer funds no more than five percent during the summer months primarily.
Um, what else? Uh, just if I could speak briefly. So the, the law allows us to transfer up to five percent from one particular budget category to another to cover an overage. And what I would point to, for example, is our career technical education, which we've been looking at. There's a negative twelve hundred seventy-six dollar balance. Um, what the five percent allows me to do is say, oh, well, regular instruction has money that they didn't spend. I'm going to move some of that budget, twelve hundred seventy-six dollars from that budget down to career and technical to make them come out to zero um for the year. And that's, that's primarily what this five percent allows us to do. We are not allowed to go over our budget. So our budget forty-five million, two thirty-seven eighty-eight. I can't spend a penny more than that, but sometimes the needs need to shift between categories. So the approving this five percent transfer allows me to take care of that.
Is that just by category or, I mean, there's lots of line items in the budget?
It's by category. So do you just, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
So I think there's
I have to read it, yeah. I make a motion for student to section one four eight five four of title twenty A. The superintendent of schools be authorized to transfer not more than five percent of the total appropriation for any cost center in the current fiscal year operating budget to another cost center or among other cost centers. Provided that the total current fiscal year operating budget shall not be increased by such transfers.
Second.
Great discussion. Will we be notified of any changes? Will we get a, a list of what those changes are?
So usually those changes happen during the audit process. So you can see when they present, one of the pages in the audit will show you the original budget and then it will show you the adjusted budget compared to actual. So that's generally how we come back and you can see it.
It's in auditing because you're doing it throughout the summer. It's not like something you do in June.
Right, no, we wait until, because we still have throughout the whole summer. We're still accruing expenses. We're still getting final invoices. Um, we don't complete our, the financial side of our audit till at least with the auditors in the building, October, but December.
So will you just highlight that page for us when it, when it comes to that? I'm aware of it.
Well, luckily on June first is our first June meeting. Yes, our auditor will be in to discuss the twenty-three audit. So I'll make sure. Oh, okay, I'll make sure. I'm gonna have both for you before you leave.
Okay.
You can read and I'll, I'll, I'll tag it.
Thank you, Denise. Appreciate that. Ready?
Okay. So now, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And item eight, donation, Charles S Hatch Post Seventy-nine, American Legion Berwick. Five hundred dollars to the backpack po- program. So another, that's a motion.
Motion to accept and thank you very much.
Yeah, second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? And number nine, uh, reduction in force discussion.
Okay, we began this discussion uh at our last meeting when we nominated uh probationary staff, some um probationary staff from one to two or two on to continuing contract. Um, basically, we um listed those um features that were potentially going to be ref um because we wanted to show that they were in good standing so that if they come back into our district at any point in time over the course of their, their contracted time when they're um able to do so uh that we have them in good standing. So we have two portions, what we need to do this evening. So the first part, and you're going to be getting this information. So the first part is that we need a motion to eliminate the positions. And then there needs to be a motion to terminate the contracts for those specific features. So similar to how we did the probationary list, we don't read the names, but you will have them. You have those names. So I'm gonna hand these out and then we can have any conversation, discussion, questions. There are two separate boats, votes, and they're both on this one sheet. Thank you.
First and then discussion.
Oh, I'll make the motion um to eliminate the positions listed. I, do I, do I, do I number the positions?
You can, you can read the positions.
To eliminate the positions as listed below. Three noble flex positions. One team of four from Noble Middle School. One behavior interventionist, yeah, which was Essar Funds from the Noble Middle School. One PE due to consolidation. One art position due to consolidation. And one world language teacher from the Noble High School.
Second. Oh, second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yeah, discussion.
This is the total of all people in the district that are not, they're not coming, that are not coming back. Cause I compared the number fifteen.
This is the number of positions that have been reduced in this budget. Here's the thing that just needs to be clear. Many of these positions, uh several of these people will actually be able to go into current open positions.
Right.
So the numbers are different in terms of bodies versus positions. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes. I don't know where the number fifteen came from.
Yeah, so to your point, that's eleven, but some of those are actually going to be moved into other positions.
Well, I understand that.
No, 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 I'm just saying you're right.
So this sounds like so the other piece is this is a teaching position. There are other positions that have been reduced.
Okay.
But they are not in the teaching contract position.
Okay.
So that, so then the physical positions itself are a little bit more than that because there was two clerical and uh three tech positions. Yeah, no, you do not have to. This tonight is really about the
Two clerical and three?
And educational.
Thank you. The motions? Okay, I seconded. And any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, and now we need a motion uh to terminate the contract.
I'll, I'll make that same motion. And I move to um terminate the contract for the following teachers and they are as, as listed. There are five.
Anyone second? A second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Regret. Yeah, regrets.
Moving on to employment.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm going to do is when we have resignation and retirement letters, if we get information of them, like if they're moving to a different position or if they're relocating, I'll say that, but some of them don't necessarily provide that information. So I'll tell you what I, what we have. So the first one, and we need to make a motion on every single one of these individually, so it's not as a group. So the first one is Sarah LaRanger. She's currently at Noble High School as the health teacher. She is resigning and she accepted a position at Yarmouth High School for the, a similar position.
Motion. I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
The next one is Maria Cannon. She's at um currently Noble High School instructional coach. Um, her husband has been relocated to San Diego and she has resigned due to that relocation.
Except?
And then we have Karen Heim, Noble Middle School, social worker.
Motion?
Motion to.
I'll move. Actually, he just keeps asking.
So it was, okay.
All in favor?
Okay, and then Jamie Hallmeyer Stewart, um Lebanon Elementary School, grade four. She has accepted an assistant principal position, Farmington, New Hampshire.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Exciting for her.
Motion? Who's doing?
I make the motion with regrets.
And second?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh Heather LaViolet, she's currently Lebanon Schools Excel teacher and she just listed for family, for family reasons.
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Are you voting?
Oh, yeah.
I'm paying attention.
Okay, and then we have Natalie Batchelder. She's um Huzzy School, grade one. She has accepted a preschool position in Kittery.
Motion to accept. Second?
A second.
All in favor?
No, it works really well. Josh is right. It's easy for me to be like, okay, same people. I'm kidding, it's okay.
And then the next one is just an FYI. There is no motion that needs to be made for this one. Um, Kristin Johnson, who is the administrative assistant at North Berwick Elementary School. She's been there for about four years. Um, she took another administrative assistant role in an office.
Oh, and we don't need to
Right, right. So we're going to move on to retirements and um two of these are just FYI um to recognize the, the time in and the last one is a teacher, so we will need a motion of that. So Lisa Rose is um currently a custodian at Huzzy School. She's been with our district for twenty years. So she is going to be finishing up um at the end of June.
Uh, so much for that service.
And then Marty Roberts, who's at Noble Middle School, is an ed tech. Um, she's been there six years, so she will be retiring in June as well.
Uh, thank you.
And the next one, I am very happy that you are in the audience.
Yeah.
Good evening. So, yeah. So Deborah Butler, um Noble Middle School, special education, forty-three years.
In another school.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need a motion.
Motion to accept with regret.
And great thanks.
Yeah.
And Wahoo for you.
Second.
And who's? All in favor?
Before that.
Who's the first?
Peg.
Peg.
Was it Peg? Okay, thanks. Yeah, okay.
And superintendent update.
Okay, so just a quick update on next week. Um, we will be in the auditorium for six thirty PM. We are um working on childcare um in the B gym, which is the smaller of the two gyms. Um, when we confirm that that happens, we will send communication out about that. We feel that that will help um just help with families come, being able to come in. We've heard that that it's, it's a struggle sometimes to come in for the meeting at that time. So you will be on um the stage, like we, we have been for some of the budget meetings. And it will be split into three sections per town. Um, for those of you who haven't been there, so the vote, when you come in, even as a board, you come in and you, you register at your, you check in at your town spot and then you come up to sit. Um, we will, you will get a, a piece of paper to make some of those um, you know, votes. And then there will be a couple that will be written. We will have to, we'll elect a moderator and we'll go through each article. And we're just, we're gonna take our time going through the articles and um as residents, feel free to speak. Um, because you, you know, you are a resident as well as on our board, but just don't feel like you can't speak at that time. We just want to make sure you
Can I ask a question about the process?
Sure.
Cause I'm never cleared this. So um residents can get up and speak to whatever and can they move for money to be added to a certain budget line or decreased? Or how does?
Yes.
Yes.
Either way?
Either way.
And then that small body votes? And if it's majority approves, that's the amount that goes into the budget.
Right. Second.
Yes.
Wait, Denise has a
Just one clarification is that it's not residents, it's registered voters.
Yes, yeah, yes. And we are going to send a reminder, Denise held up her budget, her annual report. We are asking that those come in because we don't have ex, a bunch of extra copies here, so we will
People bring it with them, that would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
Have people gotten them in the mail?
Yes.
Do we know?
Victoria hasn't yet.
Part of Lebanon hasn't, right? But you guys have.
Oh, well, you gave us one, so I didn't
Yeah, well, I I got mine. Some that got it in Lebanon and some that haven't gotten it yet, so we're assuming it'll be there in the next little while.
Yeah, I got mine last week.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the select board don't have them yet, so.
Okay. All right. Um, and then it just takes as long as it takes to go through the process.
So can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
So for graduation?
Yes.
What is it that we're, we're supposed to wear our cap and gowns? Um, but so what does that mean exactly? So did you honor cords? Do you wear the tassel? Do you?
So we typically just let folks know that we are going to participate and then we just tell them what our colors or what schools we went to. And so we don't go into the, we don't typically wear, like if you're a doctor, you don't wear a little, but yeah, if you want to. It's really just about um presenting it's the robe. With the robe to, you know, at that night, that's all. It's not, it's not, it's just a, it's kind of
Are you just wearing the robe and that's it?
Yeah.
Not wearing sashes or?
We do typically wear um the sash from our schools, yeah, if you have it. If you do, you do. I don't know.
Hon- honor sash, but that was
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't have anything that says
Right.
I think does Jen get them?
Yeah. Let's Jen ask like what's
Let's talk.
Yeah. Okay, cause I have everything.
Okay.
So it, there was no reason to go out and just say, you know what I mean?
Yep, right. Okay. Well, let, let's talk afterwards, Jerry.
I know.
I think that's it. That's it. We just want to make sure we covered that process for the budget hearing next week.
All right. Uh, and our last public input. Do you have any public input?
Uh, John Hall, Northbrook. Um, I am curious of the um positions of people that are retiring. How many of those are not being filled or aren't currently?
Um. I would say um, looking at the retirement list, that the position at Noble, Noble Middle School um is not being filled in that capacity.
Which one?
That's already, that's already, yeah.
Yeah, that's the that's one of the three that we've been talking about.
Yeah.
All right. Just clarify, you're talking about the attacks or special, a special education?
The ed tech.
I can stop. Uh, other public input? Uh, I make a motion. All in favor? Reading adjourned.
All right, I think Denise has gifts.
Yeah.